And. We're good.
Thank you, and welcome everyone to our February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole. And before we get into the meeting, I would like to ask legislator Brooke Harris if he would recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The public. Which it stands.
A nation under God, that is.
Justice for all.
Thank you, legislator Harris, for reciting the pledge for us. Roll call.
Mr. Barnes. Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Mr. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Dibble? Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Root? Mr. Stocken?
Here.
And Mr. Dibble, are you on? Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. We will begin with our resource management portion of this meeting, and this is typically chaired by legislator David Decker. We have first up is Scott Torrey of Soil and Water, Executive Director. And we do have an attached monthly report from Mr. Torrey. But Scott, do you have anything that needs to be outlined or pointed out on this for us? Is there? Any comments or questions from the the board? Laced to Soil and Water in the report? We will continue on with Youth Bureau Director Brian Perkins. Brian, welcome. I see you're on.
Yeah, good afternoon. How's everybody doing?
Very well. Anything that you would like to highlight or point out on your report?
I don't think so. The report was pretty straightforward. The majority of the supplies that we have for the Safe Harbor program, actually, if you're looking over my shoulder, there's boxes there. That's what most of that stuff is back there. So I'm gonna be getting scheduled to put those together soon and get those go-bags ready to go out to different organizations that may be able to help people that could be victims of human trafficking. So it's kind of the big thing. Other than that, still just participating in any of the zoo meetings from the different groups that I've been involved in and keeping up with that.
Thank you. Any particular questions for Mr. Perkins from the board?
Legislator Barnes, I have a quick question.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, Brian, reading your report, you talked about these go-bags. Could you explain a little bit more who they're going to and what they contain?
Sure, yeah. So the Safe Harbor program is geared to help anyone who could be a victim of human trafficking, sex trafficking, things like that. So the go-bags are really going to be intended for law enforcement could have them in the back of their vehicles. There's going to be some select organizations, maybe counseling groups and things like that, who might come into contact with them that'll have these bags that are really just going to have some basic essentials. So toiletries, you know, deodorant, toothpaste, things like that, you know, any of those toiletry kind of needs that they might have in the bags, but also blanket, a gift card for some food, there's some little snacky type things in there, two bottles of water. So it's just something to have those kind of immediate needs that if someone was involved in a trafficking incident, you know, somebody was holding them captive or something like that. I mean, that 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 example may be a bit extreme, but if somebody was being held against their will in some way and needed to get out, it's kind of just those first, here's some little things to give you something to get you started.
So that would be basically for like domestic abuse victims or?
Um, could be, yeah, they definitely could fall into those scenarios. A lot of times when people think of trafficking, what they think of is, you know, some the teenage girl that connected with somebody on the internet and didn't know who she was going to go meet, and then he kind of abducts her or coerces her to go with her with him somewhere or something like that. And then the go-bags are there so that if she does happen to get away and reach somebody that they've got some resources to at least get started. We're also going to have information in there of who to contact next, kind of the you know, DSS is going to really take the lead on a lot of that part of it and making sure we have all the contacts and all of those things so that we can make sure they're going to be safe and taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
This is legislator Hopkins. I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, Brian, I'm just not sure how you get that to the person if they're being held hostage. How do they get your these these packages?
Yeah, that's the kind of the big problem. And that's where, you know, if they're able to break away, or if there's somebody else who realizes they're in this situation, because they're not all cut and dried, and it's not always a, you know, they're they're locked away in a room somewhere. Sometimes it's just that person that is kind of being held against their will. They're able to go around with someone else, maybe with their captive is the wrong word, but with the person that's holding them that, you know, they can go around, but they're not allowed to talk to anybody. They're not allowed to socialize or, you know, make eye contact or whatever. We don't see very much of that around here at all. It's definitely a a more urban problem, but it is a state program that they were trying to get reached out to all the counties, and we got on board last year. So this is our first steps into, you know, being able to have the resources available. And, you know, we're getting some trainings going. There's there's a whole lot of other things that are going to be taking place. So this is kind of the kickoff thing. We did get the seed money to get it going. We had to get it spent. So the go-bags were kind of the big recommendation of, you know, we're going to need some of those anyway. Let's get those going so that we can get the program up and running. So hopefully, to answer your question, Ms. Hopkins, the person can make some contact with someone somewhere one way or another that says they need help, and then they can reach out and get the bags to them or get the, you know, get them out or in some way. It is one thing that we made sure we did when we were ordering the bags is to not make anything identifiable. You know, so normally, you know, when we're doing promo bags, there's a big logo all over it that says, hey, you know, we're part of this group. We definitely didn't want to do that with these bags because we don't want to bring the attention to, you know, if if someone was able to get them a bag, but they weren't able to remove them from the situation, then we don't want to, you know, alert somebody that, hey, they they were reaching out to somebody and and they're going to be in trouble. So it's kind of a complicated situations sometimes. So anything we can do to help is going to be welcomed, I hope.
If I could help you out for a second, Brian, if you don't?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Trafficked youth are youth that or any adult that might be trafficked, they're too afraid to come out and let people know necessarily that they're being trafficked. Their circumstances may be such that the person that is holding them, and I say that very lightly, may have them very scared that they're going to hurt their family or that some sort of threat that holds them in the position that they're in. You may have very well in your days around Allegheny County have come across a youth that's trafficked. They don't they don't look they look just like an average day, an average day child, but they are really held under a fear that if they just came out and told you that they were trafficked, that it would be that that would hurt somebody or hurt them, or it's really a very genuine fear that is really kind of enmeshed in their daily life. Those youth, so the the go-bags, so we might put a phone number, there's like a national phone number they could call if they decide to step out. We can't, it's not, you cannot just pull them out because they have to tell you what's going on. You may have a good idea that that's happening. You would, you could give them that go-bag, and in there may be a card or information, but it's not going to say, are you being trafficked? The information will be in a written in a way that won't cause them any harm should whoever is holding them and not necessarily captive, but captive. So that person won't have an idea of what it said. Sometimes they've used, counties have used like chapstick with like just a little phone number on it, not with the dashes or just all one solid number. So there's various ways to hide that, but to let whoever is being trafficked know that there is a way out and that we can that there is help out there for them. So our, now our plan is not only to get those to-go bags out, but to educate the community, our county about what it looks like for for our youth to be trafficked and for the belief to know that it happens everywhere. It's not Allegheny County isn't any more protected from that than any other county in the state. And that we look to educate the the other agencies that we work with as long and the police agencies as well, so that that those victims, we can do our best to try to try to help them. Does that help at all? I hope.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Our DSS Commissioner Edna Case that was talking here. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else for Brian Perkins before we move on? Brian, thank you for that update and interesting conversation on the project.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Next, we have from Cooperative Extension, Laura Hunzberger. And again, we have this report that has been distributed and attached. Laura, anything you want to highlight or point out on this report?
Yes. Hi, everybody. Nice to to see you. I just wanted to let you know that Lynn Bliven, our Ag and Natural Resources Issue Leader, has been recognized as the Extension Educator of the Year by the New York State Beef Producers Association. It's their annual award, which is super exciting. Secondly, Patty Amadon, who is our Program Manager for our SNAP Education Program. She's been selected by Cooperative Extension Administration to serve on a statewide diversity, equity, and inclusion leadership team. She's one of twenty-four throughout the entire state that will be leading, helping lead this program throughout the fifty-seven associations in the county. So we're pretty excited to have these recognitions going on in our association.
Very, very exciting. Congratulations to both Lynn Bliven and Patty Amadon. Put Allegheny County on the map.
Yep, sure does.
Any particular questions for Laura on her report?
Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Harris.
Yes.
I'm going to try to do this. But, oh, yes, I can. Laura, in your report, so in our packet, it's well, actually, in yours, it would be page eight. That that chart that describes the thirty percent threshold for local foods to in school lunches.
Yep.
Can you describe what we're looking at there?
Mine is sideways. So I believe that what you're looking at is, okay, so first of all, the thirty percent only is only lunch. If the school serves breakfast, that it doesn't matter if they're using local yogurt or local dairy products or apples, that that that's separate. So, and I apologize if my head goes sideways. That's how I have to read this. So what this is letting them not letting you know is the percentage of lunch from dairy. So some of these counties, Wellsville, let's just say, they get twenty percent of their lunch lunch from from dairy. So they need an additional seven, sorry, nine, I can do math in my head today, in order to reach the thirty, which would be about sixteen thousand dollars. So it's just a way, a different way of looking at the different goals that these schools need to reach, and some of the schools that are actually doing really well. So the ones that are in the twenties just by including dairy and then apples, they might need not much additional food in order to reach the thirty to get that additional money back from the state.
And what it, so what does that benefit if they reach that thirty percent?
So if they, and I'm not, I don't know the specific numbers, but if they reach thirty percent local foods, which means New York State, they then get additional money back from the state, which can equal the cost of a person up to like thirty-six thousand dollars they can get from the state if they reach that number. It's all.
And the reason and the reason there's only six districts on this chart is because, right?
Well, during with the pandemic, some of them sort of didn't continue with their efforts. These are the ones that did continue during twenty twenty that have been able to keep their numbers up despite the different way that lunches look these days.
Okay, not to beat it to death, but last question. In my kids' district, they've gone to free breakfast during the pandemic. Is that true in districts as well?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out for you and and send you an email.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Any any further questions for Laura while she's with us, Cooperative Extension? If not, thank you, Laura, for being with us.
Thank you.
And we will move on. We have David Decker is typically Chair of Resource Management Committee. Legislator Decker, do you have anything to to add or bring up for this?
Mr. Chairman, there's nothing that I'm aware of that we should be discussing.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the Budget Committee. This is typically chaired by legislator Brooke Harris, and we do have some reports from our County Treasurer, Terry Ross. So County Treasurer, if you can lead it through these reports, sales tax report.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Terry. I included the twenty twenty-one County Sales Tax Report. And as you can see at the top of that, we had our first diverted dollars from our sales tax for the distressed hospital fund, which is that hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred eleven dollars and forty-nine cents. That is the total amount that should have been diverted for twenty twenty that they pushed off until right now. So we'll see that. And then every quarter here on through the rest of the year, we'll see about forty-some thousand dollars diverted for that distressed hospitals between thirty-five and forty thousand, along with the AIM payments that will hit in May and December. The AIM payments per the Governor's Budget, we will probably get hit with an additional approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two entities in the county that we had not been paying for. They were Alfred and Ballmer. So we will get hit with that with our new AIM diversion in May.
So this treasurer, you have the distressed hospital fund. We talked about that, but this is the first dollar that we've seen that's been, that's reduced our sales tax. This is, we didn't have any come out last year.
That's correct.
This is the first that we've seen. So you take the hundred and twenty-nine plus that around forty thousand dollars or so for the next, you know, quarterly for this year, and add the additional, did you say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Thereabouts fourteen.
Correct.
So now we're up in the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars or in that range total that we're going to be. I'm off the top of my head.
Well, actually, with just those three new additional diversions, the one twenty-nine, the one twenty for the rest of this year for the distressed hospital, and the two fifty additional for AIM, that adds about another five hundred thousand dollars to what we already were paying, which was five oh seven for.
Twenty over a million dollars.
So it puts us at over a million dollars, correct?
Yes.
This is legislator Harris.
Yes.
I guess, I'm sorry, Terry, I'm confused. I was under the impression that because the governor was also proposing that twenty percent reduction in AIM payments in total, that our liability would end up being closer to seventy thousand with the addition of Alfred and Oliver.
For just the AIM?
Right.
Yes, and that is still up for grabs because there's some action in there. Is it going to be twenty percent or is it going to be five percent? For the AIM and Dave.
Okay, so we don't.
Call we were on, Dave indicated that it might be twenty, Dave from NISAC I'm referring to, that it might be twenty, but it also might be five. So we're unsure really of what that deduction will be of what we currently pay for AIM.
Okay, that's bad.
Yeah, so.
Legislator Healy here, Ms. Ross. So this is just another state stealing money from us, is that correct?
Healing is a big word, but yes, they are diverting our sales.
It's the right word.
Yeah, they're going to divert the sales tax that is ours to pay things that they normally paid. Correct.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any any more questions or comments on the sales tax report or these diversions that we're talking about? It clearly takes, you know, shift from Allegheny County, our sales tax to New York State, a million dollars that wasn't even on the table.
And in grocery receipts, the one thing to note is that our grocery receipts to this date compared to last year, we are up about fifty-nine thousand dollars. So we are holding our own with the collection of sales tax in Allegheny County. It's just that we're not being able to control what's diverted out of it.
Terry, this is legislator Decker. Do you happen to know what the total statewide is that has been diverted?
I can get that, Dave. I don't have that right now off the top of my head or in my hand, so I can get that for you.
That would be interesting to know, I think.
Brooke, do you remember? I don't remember what that dollar amount was statewide for hospitals.
Just hospitals?
Yeah.
No, I don't. I don't know. I don't know the AIM diversion either.
NISAC has put some good numbers together, and most of, and they are state numbers.
Yeah, I can get my hands on that, Dave, though. I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further on the the sales tax report for the Treasury? And if not, we can move on with the revenue reports.
Yeah, this is the monthly revenue report that we've been giving the committee, and there's not much of a change. We the numbers are still up. They could be changed at this point because we don't have everything looked for twenty twenty. So we're not finalized with our twenty twenty books. We haven't closed them out yet, but this will reflect what we've collected in revenues for twenty twenty-one so far, if you look at the year-to-date transaction count.
Any questions on the revenue report?
Let's jump in, Mr. Chairman, real quick and say that the distressed hospital fund is two hundred and fifty million dollars statewide.
Two hundred and fifty million statewide. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some resolutions, calling on Governor of New York to address some of these issues. These are coming from NISAC. And I think that we can go down down through these. These are from the Standing Committee on Taxation and Finance of NISAC, of which our County Treasurer is Vice Chair of this committee. And I see these are printed and distributed just as they came from NISAC. I would assume these need to be localized and conformed to be from Allegheny County and some wording changed along those lines if we're to adopt these. But Terry, do you want to lead us down through these? It seems fairly straightforward, some of what we were just talking about.
Yes, I can. In the, I shared these with our Budget Chair, Mr. Harris, and that's when we decided we should bring them forward to have the board consider them for resolutions locally. NISAC is encouraging us to do that as well. The first one calls for the Governor and state legislature to substantially reduce across the board state funding cuts to localities for fiscal year twenty-one and find alternatives rather than state aid cuts to counties to close out the state budget gap. So this is about the reduction that the state has in place for the revenues that we receive regardless of the program and us still supporting the program, but the cuts they've made, the twenty percent that really in the end could be between five and twenty. We were not sure where that's going to fall. And I will divert anything else. Maybe maybe Mr. Harris has a comment about that as well.
Not in particular, but I will, I will say about all four of these, the reason we're trying to rush these through is because we have intercounty on Friday. You know, it'd be nice to get this passed through budget so we could get it on our intercounty agenda for this Friday because it's because it's state budget related, we want to get it up there quickly.
Nice. Will you move this first one, Mr. Harris?
I will. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Any seconds?
I I had, Mr. Lynn, did you second that?
Phil Curran seconded it.
All right. And this would be with having these rewarded to Allegheny County?
Yes, correct.
Discussion on this first resolution?
Just one more thing, Mr. Chairman. I did I did run all these by Mr. Donigan, and he's looked them over and and he's in a, he's happy with their wording.
Thank you. And that would be our county attorney. We are, we'll vote on this, the first resolution, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion is carried and is approved. We'll go to the second one.
The second resolution is calling on the Governor and the Legislature to end the state diversion of local sales tax. So this would be based on our conversation, our AIM diversion and the distressed hospital diversion, which could be upwards of a million dollars for us.
And that has that two hundred and fifty million in the resolution was just looked up and questioned. Motion to move this one forward?
Havy will move it.
Legislator Barnes will second.
Motion made by legislator Havy, seconded by legislator Barnes. Discussion. Pretty much what we were just talking about. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. And the third resolution?
The third resolution is calling on the Governor and state legislative leaders to permanently extend all existing local sales tax rates and allow all counties to set their local rate up to four percent under local law and to reform the process over other home rule revenue options. This would be that we would not have to take to the state the permission to have our sales tax be at four percent or above. They would permanently, we would extend all sales tax increases with this resolution. We would still have to have a local law to do that, but Brooke and I kind of cleared up with the state that it meant that if we were to stay at four and a half, we would stay at four and a half. And then we would have to have a local law every few years to extend that locally, but we would not have to have re, we would not require permission from the state to do that.
Thank you. Motion. Thank you. Motion?
Fenton.
Second, Dibble.
Motion made by legislator Fenton, seconded by legislator Dibble. This is something that we've been, we as counties across New York State have pushed for a long time. And what happens when we need to ask permission from the state assembly and senate is we end up getting used as a pawn late in the state budget process. And many times this has been held up. And there are counties that have not had this passed because the legislature views it as a way of increasing or raising taxes, even though that's a local issue and should be our issue. So an important one, if we could get that, get that through. Discussion?
Mr. Dibble?
Yes, Mr. Dibble?
Just want to point out that the county is taking over a lot of the town responsibilities like bridges and the tap program?
Yes. Further questions or comments?
This is legislator Burdick. This says up to 4%, but aren't we over that? So how is that going to affect our rate?
That's what Mr. Harris and I explicitly asked on a webinar that we were on. And we were told that it would be anything existing, even if you're over four, because there are other boroughs. I think there's a borough that's over four and maybe a couple other counties that are over four and a half even. So we were told that it would lock us into where we are and anything in the future to reduce or decrease would not require us having to go through the state. That's what we were told, Jean. That's the best information I have on that because we specifically asked that question regarding Allegheny County.
Yeah, it concerns me a little bit because it's in the resolution and it's very clear that it says up to 4%. And we're already over that. So I just, it concerns me that are we going to be forced to reduce ours? Even though they're telling you, you know, but do we have anything concretor in writing?
If we're going to adopt a resolution, can't we just put the, our current amount in there instead of having it say 4%? Have our resolution say 4.5?
That's what I was going to suggest, Brenda.
This does say, if you look at the very first resolved, it says by granting permanent home rule sales tax authority to counties at their current rate or up to 4%. So I think it does cover us the way this is currently written.
Legislator Hopkins, it does say that in the title of it as well, really to extend all existing local sales tax rates. I think we're covered.
It looks like it's covered and also to think that this would be adopted verbatim without going through the grinder of the assembly and senate, getting a lot of county treatment is a, a long shot at that. But Mr. Dibble, you had something?
Yes, I wanted to question for county administrator or county attorney, any reason why we should not make that 4.5 in the resolution?
It looks like that that is covered.
Yeah.
It's a good question and a good point, but it looks like it is covered.
If Jeff Donigan is on, could he clarify it a little bit more?
Yeah, this is the county attorney, Jeff Donigan. I agree with the way that Chris described that, that it is covered as it's currently drafted to, to address that concern that was raised on it being for 4.5 and it covers up to that amount.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. And it looks like we have one more resolution.
Yes, the last resolution is calling on the governor and state legislature to provide more options for local governments to invest their cash. Many of you might not know, but we are very limited in the types of investments that we can make for county money, municipal money. Pretty much we are locked into CDs and treasury bills and there are some other options that we have, but not very many. So this is allowing, asking the legislature to provide more options, which is detailed there from line 22 to line 37. And giving the counties and municipalities more options to invest the cash they have. And while also maintaining security and coverage from FDIC and, you know, collateral and all that. But these are the only five things that they are opening up.
Motion to get this on the floor?
Havy will move it.
Seconded by legislator Decker.
Motion made by legislator Havy, seconded by legislator Decker. I see that there is other, other states have many of these options already in place. New York is behind the eight ball on this county treasure.
Correct, yeah. We have not, they have not adjusted our ability to invest in other things in many years. Even with so much as credit unions, they still are really not on the approved list. So this is a, an enhancement to what we currently have.
There a particular reason why they have not moved forward with some of these or diverted other, other business?
Well, my opinion is that there are a lot more opportunities than they were when the law was written. And they need to catch up to some degree and still maintain the integrity of the investment of taxpayers' money and the fact that they need to be secure. So I think that's why you don't see everything on there, but you do see some new things on there that we can invest in. I'm guessing that Allegheny County probably won't invest in, in most of these because we get, we get great rates on what we have and these probably would not offer us great rates, but you never know. It's certainly something that we'll look into when we have the ability. If it's approved.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Dibble?
Yes.
Just a comment for Jeff Donigan. Any place on the bottom, we might want to add copies to the Western County Intercounty Association. We should do that.
This will, I believe, legislator Dibble, these will all be going to intercounty. And you might have missed it, but I, I believe when we got into this portion, legislator Harris, who is president of that organization, wanted to be sure that if these were passed today, they'd be addressed at the next intercounty meeting, if that's correct, Mr. Harris.
Do you want to name on the bottom?
That's right, Mr. Chairman. I think we're in good shape.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that.
This is legislator Graves, Mr. Chairman. Just have a question for the treasurer about the state controller because you can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of the state prohibitions to outside investments or changing how we invest our money is all regulated by the state controller's office. Did the state controller comment on any of this? Is this being recommended by the state controller to do this?
Carl, if you look at the, the statements between 10 and 12, the comptroller, this was from a, as a recent state comptroller cash management audit. That municipalities across New York take more proactive steps to maximize interest income. So I do believe that he has approved this and wants it to move forward as well.
You're pretty good. Thank you. I missed that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Yet motion passes. Legislator Brooke Harris, chairman of budget committee. Thanks for bringing those forward. Hopefully they will get a little action, do some good in, in Albany. Any other comments or, or anything you want to bring up with the budget portion of the meeting?
Just want to thank treasurer of us that, you know, those were, those were her resolutions. I appreciate her bringing to us and doing the hard work of explaining to us. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Well, and I will add, and we have had, I, I mentioned upfront that our county treasurer is vice chair of that budget and finance committee, standing committee with NISAC. We have a number of legislators and others that are involved in, in these at state level. So it helps put Allegheny County on the map. We have a, an input as to what the effects are on small rural counties like ours and it's, it's good, good stuff. So thank you, county treasurer.
Aye, Kurt. This is legislator Fenton. We did the, the the, we are going to this, the
I don't know about others, Mr. Fenton, but you're, you're locked up and I caught just a couple of words of what you said. We'll have to circle back to you. Are, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I, I can now.
Yeah, we, as a transportation, to, to stay in the, in Governor Cuomo.
All right, you, you were broken up there a little bit, Dwight. We're going to have to circle back on you. I caught Cuomo and transportation.
Yeah, and I don't know for sure, but go ahead.
Thank you. Legislator Harris, anything else before we move on?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Planning and economic development committee and this, we have a few things to take care of here. This is chaired by legislator Deborah Root. First, we have here Durham, his monthly report as planning director. That's attached. It's been distributed. Here, do you have anything you want to highlight or point out to us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, chairman. I want to note that we're actively working with the county administrators' office on the police reform plan with the sheriff's office and the folks you appointed last month. There's a session tomorrow that was advertised at 3:00 PM if anybody wants to join on that call. If you need more information, feel free to shoot me an email and I'll get that out to you. And we're also working on the county pandemic plan that will be, that was required around the same time last summer by the governor's office or the county government to actually have a plan for the next pandemic. Hopefully we don't have one ever, but we've been working on that. It's gone out for comment by the department heads and unions. And now we'll do the edits next week and probably toward the end of next week. Be sending out the draft as it is to all the legislators and, and folks so that you can take a look at it. The timeline is to get that approved in March. So you'll be getting an official MOE probably at the March 3rd meeting related to that to get that started. The land bank, you, you approved, thank you, a public hearing date for a CDD grant for the land bank to do a housing study. The, there appear to be some questions during the last meeting on that. I would suggest just give me a call direct or call directly to Jason Eisman. At our general number, 268-7472. There's an option on our phone tree for the land bank or myself. If you have questions about that, there hasn't been a decent housing study countywide in probably 20-plus years. And it's been a challenge when we have done the comprehensive plan each time to put very good data in there. So this would probably help us with future projects related to improving housing or determining with developers what kind of housing really is needed in the county. So hopefully you all support that project. It's a pass through if, for the county, so there's no direct county cash involved.
Possibility here for other funding opportunities based on what that housing study produces.
Right, that's exactly it. This is laying the foundation for future work without this. We're, we can only really access either the census data, which we all know, that was kind of sketchy last year. And the, the work that's done more on a town-by-town basis by our community action groups in the county. They don't usually do the whole county at once, so.
In here, this is not land bank specific, correct? This is something the land bank's going to manage the project as a subrecipient, but the information will be the county's information, not the land bank's.
That is correct. And the software that is part of the project will also be, whatever product they have will be available to real property, to the assessors, to, you know, the accord and the community action folks. So there should be a, a good, good use of that software package too. After badmouthing the census a little bit, we did finish the outreach project. And we finally got paid by New York State for that outreach project in the end of January. So that is over. And I wanted to give kudos to Town and Village of Cuba. Our office assisted the municipalities with creating an updated comprehensive plan. And it's the first time the town has had a comprehensive plan. And Michelle Denhoff led the charge on that from our office. There was some nice artwork by our summer intern through the architecture program from Alfred State that was incorporated into that. And so far, people seem happy with the product there. So kudos to Cuba for being the first one to get a cop plan done in 2021. And the last thing I wanted to very briefly show you is the, the new dashboard for the the COVID data. Can you all see that now?
Yeah.
Okay, so historically for the previous year, we were doing a daily press release and it was totally plain old text. And then once a week, we'd have some maps and some graphs. With our new hire in the office, Nick, our cat came in and he has some GIS background. And he was able to take the vast majority of all that data the health department's been collating and put it into a more graphical format. So you can easily access this right off the front of the county webpage. There's three maps that we were doing in the past as PDFs. There's one for zip codes. There's one for the towns data and there's one for the legislative districts. And then up in the big green box, there's a series of tabs. So every day around 3 o'clock, Nick downloads all the data from either the state or the county or the feds and inputs this data to show the new cases, the total cases, the recovered cases. The, the new one today was that the health department has started giving us the vaccine data. We have the, the deaths by county of residents and the deaths by the place of. So if this number has been confusing for some folks and the, the 55 on this page are people that actually passed away in our county. Whereas the 80, they may have been transferred to Strong or Buffalo or somewhere like that who passed away there, but they actually were our residents from our county. There's daily tests and there's total tests administered. There's more tabs over here for showing the people in quarantine. And then on the last one is this big, pretty colorful one that shows you the, how old people are who have been getting sick. There's another chart that lets you look at by town. So you can click on So you can click on any particular town. So the town of Canadia, uh, as of February 14th, had 179 cases and so on and so forth. Um, you can see that there's more female cases than male. And there's also a nice pie chart for your legislative districts. And then lastly, and I won't bother clicking on these, but there's the data from New York State and for the US. So we put that up one week ago. It's still a work in progress. But, uh, I think it's pretty impressive from where we work. And, um, most people have been positive about it. So we hope to, uh, keep making it better. And we've also learned a new skill set. So may, there may be uses for, um, dashboards for other types of things in the future that we could work with other departments on or get other information out. And that, I believe, is my report.
Thank you. Any, uh, any questions for?
Yeah, legislator Barnes.
Yeah.
Um, on your graph there, um, it would be helpful, I would think. For instance, uh, your numbers for zero to 10 and 90 to 100, if they showed the total number of people in the county, in other words, you got, uh, those nine to 10, there's a heck of a lot more nine to, or, um, nine to 10, or zero to 10, um, than there are 90 to 100. But if you could compare the numbers of those that were infected as opposed to the total number of people in the county in that age range, it would be helpful to be able to determine, uh, a little bit more accurately what's going on.
Yes, and of course, we're, uh, we're trying to get all the information that's readily available. Um, I'm not sure, I mean, I'll, I'll definitely tell Nick about your idea. And, uh, he's probably listening actually right now. But the, uh, some of this information is, uh, not, not updated as often as you might like. And that, that's been a challenge in getting, uh, the most accurate daily information out. So we'll see how that goes. Thanks for the suggestion. And if anyone else has suggestions, I recommend you just give us a call, two, six, eight, seven, four, seven, two, and click on Nick's phone and, uh, have a chat with him.
Thank you.
Here, legislator Healy here. I was wondering if we could go back up to, uh, touch on the Cuba, the Cuba, uh, community of Cuba and their comprehensive, uh, plan. Uh, first off, congratulations to the, to the community of Cuba for getting that done. But can you articulate, because I know you can do it a lot better than I can, to everybody listening then, why it's so important for them to have a comprehensive plan?
Well, the, the, the whole process of going through developing a plan like this is, it takes a lot of steps and they, uh, it gives the community a chance to figure out where they really want to go in the future and what's really important and what projects they would like to do. And from that information, we can then divvy up the workload for one and, um, get, get folks on board for different things that interest them. They can go after grants that will, um, you know, fund different projects. And quite often, uh, especially with the New York State grant application process, one of their questions that gets you five points or whatever is, is this project in the community's comprehensive plan? And that's an automatic, if it is, it's there and you get the points. And so, um, it's quite important to back that up. We've done a lot of comprehensive plans over the last 10, 12 years. Uh, really improved the number of communities in the county, but, uh, there's still quite a few that need to do something. So we are actively trying to work with other towns and villages right now on theirs. Um, it's looking like, uh, Town of Amity, Village Belmont, and, uh, probably going to revisit Wellsville in the coming year. So, you know, stay tuned. But it, it definitely helps with future financing of projects.
Right. Uh, mentioned earlier about the, um, what, what the county does in helping the towns. And this is one that I think is an extremely important one. There were not, uh, local comprehensive plans, uh, to speak of before this project started of reaching, of helping the towns get those. Um, it's, it's good for the county in the way that any project on the town level is good for us. But, uh, we were kind of missing the boat by not having a county-wide comprehensive plan, let alone local ones. So it, it's a great help to, to the local municipalities as well as the county. Thank you.
Yeah, and to be clear, we, we provide that service, um, as a service through the county to our local towns and villages. There's no, no fees associated with that or anything. If they were to go outside, uh, to a consultant, the, the dollar amounts would be significant. And, uh,
Oh, that wouldn't.
So, and they wouldn't, most of them wouldn't be able to afford to hire, so.
Thank you.
Comments or questions here?
Uh, this is legislator Ricky. I just want to give a shout out to Michelle Denhoff. I was on that committee and, uh, that lady knows how to run a meeting. She was, uh, did very well at herding a bunch of cats. Uh, was well. She did a great job and I couldn't have done it without her. So thank you, Kier, for, and Michelle.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yes, this is legislator Hopkins. Uh, excuse me, two quick things. Um, as chair of the Human Services Committee, I'd like to say a big thank you to Kier and, um, his group for, uh, working on that website and making that, um, information, uh, available quickly to our constituents and saying it in a very plain and, and, um, visible way. So a big help to the Department of Health to be able to take that off their plate of having to do those press releases every day. So thank you very much for that. Secondly, I'm just looking on, on your, um, on your report under B, under the branding, um, and you've talked a little bit about the style guide. I thought perhaps you or Mrs. Root might be willing to say something about the importance of having a style guide and using that, um, information in a consistent manner, um, in all ways. Um, as we look at your, your, uh, Western New York Wilds, uh, logo behind you.
Yes, so we, um, we, we had gotten approval last, uh, summer to move forward with the style guide. Uh, what that did was it allowed us to, um, get a standard package for everything from business cards and envelopes all the way through the PowerPoint presentations, advertisements, um, and different things. And we've made that, that style guide available on the website so that our, our folks at different businesses and agencies that would like to start to incorporate Western New York Wilds theme can, and their branding, can put that with their branding and know how to use it. And it's, it's quite clear. It's, uh, 30, 30-some pages long with examples of how to put together an ad, how to, um, use the theme. And, um, all they have to do is, uh, log on to the site and click, um, Media Kit, which is at the bottom of the, either the county page or the Western New York Wilds page. And then, uh, go ahead and download it right there. So, um, we think it's, it's easy to get to. It's self-explanatory. But if anybody had any questions, we'd be happy to take those questions and work with them, too. So we're hoping the colleges will incorporate some of this thinking in our local businesses. And we can, uh, get more of the word out, uh, to Western New York Wilds.
Any, any additions to that, legislator Root?
I just want to say, um, how hard the Economic Development Group team has worked on this. This is not an easy, um, quick, uh, thing to do. And over the last several months, uh, they've been working very hard. We've had very good conversations. It, it's been a good process. Uh, everybody coming and sitting at the table and discussing, looking forward, what is the best practices? How should we move ahead? Um, I, I'm just really pleased with the outcome. And, um, kudos to this whole team because it was a long process and, um, they did a great job.
Thank you. Any, uh, any further comments or questions on the, uh, report from, uh, Mr. Durham? Thank you, Kier.
Thank you.
Uh, at this time, we'll, uh, move on to, uh, Rita Selbeck Lynch, um, Director of our Employment and Training. We do have a, uh, the report is attached. And, uh, Rita, do you have anything you want to point out specifically on this report?
Good afternoon. Um, I don't really have anything to highlight this time. It's just we're still giving tape tests regularly every Tuesday at 9:00 and at 1:00 um, for private industries that are hiring right now. Um, and for our Department of Social Services contract, uh, we can do everything over the telephone or through email or regular mail. So that's why you look at our front door traffic. There aren't as many people coming in, but we're certainly doing, providing a lot of services. And for our REOLO program, uh, we still have funds for training available. So we're, we're in really good shape there. And we have a Saputo Job Fair coming up in the Training Annex, um, on the 24th. And we, we're limiting it to 10 people per session and you call here and make an appointment. And those slots are filling up.
Thank you. Uh, any particular questions on, um, this report?
Legislator Healy, um, I have a, the Saputo Job Fair, how many, you know, how many people they're looking to hire or need to hire over there?
They didn't really give us a total figure of how many they want to hire.
Mr. Healy, this is legislator Harris. When I saw that posting, I went online and it looks like they're hiring maybe 10 or 20 people.
I heard they're, uh, they're quite busy over there and we're looking, uh, to expand my considerable number of jobs. So that's, that's, uh, good for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, legislator Barnes here.
Yes.
Um, has the Siemens, uh, situation over in Olleand, has that affected many, uh, uh, are, are many of their employees that live in Allegheny County?
We haven't received any of those reports yet. I don't know that they filed their warrant notice. So we didn't have that. But what we did find out today is that, um, people that were contracted employees at the Wellsville plant are now eligible for Trade Act assistance. So that's very good news.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, one more comment from, oh, legislator Healy. I, I want to thank you, Rita, for your continued, uh, outreach to all the veterans, uh, in your program.
Thank you.
Anything, anything more for Rita? Thank you, Rita.
You're very welcome.
Uh, next we have, uh, Gretchen Handtich, um, from, um, greater Allegheny County, Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director, with a report that is attached. Gretchen, anything you'd like to point out specifically on this report? Any, uh, particular question?
I said, I was muted and I was talking. Anyway, thank you, Chairman Candel.
Whatever we didn't hear was important.
It was really important. Anyway, the one thing that, um, I wanted to, two things on here is we will be beginning our Fresh Air Adventure project and that's with the official tourism promotion agencies in Genesee, Livingston, and Orleans and Wyoming County. So by the end of the month, we'll be meeting and working on that and really kind of puts us into another, um, area that I think fits Allegheny County a little bit better. So I'm excited about starting that, um, project. And the other thing, I just would like to take time to thank WZKZ, um, during this time, um, when things were so tight and, you know, still trying to market Allegheny County. Um, Rod Beeler was kind enough to, um, really give us some public service, um, spots, um, winter tourism spots, Need a Break, Wild Antiques Trails, and Love to Ski and Winter. And there was, um, about 20 different spots that, um, he did for us with no charge. So I know that radio station is changing and, um, I'm looking to see what happens next. But, um, really want to give a shout out to Rod. He's, um, chairs our Tourism Committee. And he certainly is a big supporter of Allegheny County tourism. So, um, other than that, you can see we have some long-term projects. We're still researching and, um, seeing how things shake out with funding and where we move next. So, um, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, any particular questions for Gretchen with her report? Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you all.
We do have, uh, a report from Fred Clark, um, Economic Development, IDA, that is, uh, attached and has been distributed. Um, Craig, do you have anything you want to highlight or point out?
Yeah, I will point out a couple of things and obviously answer any questions. Uh, the first one is the Crossroads Project. I have met with a hotel developer again. They are very interested. I'm hoping that we can get a timeline set in the next few months. COVID's just really slowed down the development of hotels, but they are still a company that's very interested in building a hotel at the Crossroads. Uh, they actually, uh, might be interested in doing some professional housing in the area as well, some high-end apartments. So I, we basically need to, to tell them where they'd like to be built. And I also have another developer who's talking about building some other ones in the county. Angel Fund, we're up and running. We've got a good project. Hopefully, we'll be able to announce that in the next few weeks. We're, uh, looking at a business plan the next time we meet. And, uh, that Angel Fund group is a very good group. It's been helpful in some, looking at other activities, including the Wellsville Business Park. Uh, continue to talk to the owners. Uh, they have two or three potential projects. They're going to bring in some of their own people to set up a smaller recycling type in operation. And so you'll see more activity in the Wellsville Business Park probably in the next few months as well. Any questions on any of those?
Quickly, um,
I do have a couple more, so go ahead.
Quick, quickly is the, uh, southern part of the half of that building that was designated for, um, fast, is that still coming along?
Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts has contacted me. Uh, they're basically gonna start construction in March and hope to be open in May.
Nice.
So that's a go.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, obviously, the big project that I've been working on for quite a while and it let the legislators know to a point, but it was fairly confidential, is Great Lakes Cheese has agreed to, uh, build a $500 million plant in the county. Uh, looking at the Crossroads, we're doing some, uh, development work out there, including we've done the Geotech, we're do, we've done a topographic map. And we're doing, uh, Seeker right now. And, uh, that's a great, big, obviously huge project, among the largest in Western New York. Um, and we continue to get, uh, questions from the Cuba community and that's fine. Uh, we're sending out responses to those questions. A lot of those questions were answered on the February 9th, 2021 public hearing, but there are still questions and that's, that's good that the community's involved. Are there any questions on the Great Lakes Cheese project?
Uh, legislator Barnes, uh, obviously, the residents of Cuba are disappointed. But as I understand it, the company is the one that make, is making the final decision on this, not the county. And obviously, the county's position is, and the IDA's position is to keep it in the county. And, uh, it's too bad that Cuba might lose it, uh, but, uh, to keep it in the county is, is gotta be a plus for everybody.
Yeah, I can assure you, we worked very hard with the Cuba supervisor as well as residents, uh, some of the owners of land in Cuba. Uh, we looked at a number of sites. Uh, IDA actually spent energy, time, and money to try to find sites that make work. But yeah, it was Great Lakes Cheese that decided where they need to go for their, their super plan is what they're calling it. And the only site that they selected as the viable site was the one in, uh, the Crossroads. It was not us. You're right, Kier. Thank you. their super plan is what they're calling it. And the only site that they selected as the viable site was the one in the Crossroads. It was not us. You're right, Kier. Thank you. And the other thing is Great Lakes Cheese, everyone should know, for most companies would not have taken 18 months to find a site. But they were very insistent on keeping those 229 same people employed. And so they're very employee driven, which is very unusual in this day and age. So we give kudos to them to looking so hard to make sure we wouldn't lose those jobs.
Greg, this is legislator Decker. Where's the extra 4 million pounds of milk coming from? I mean, it's, it's not something that you do overnight.
No, you got to remember, it's a three to four year, it's a three-year construction process. Three to four years to get it fully operational. So it'll be a three-year, three to four-year span to develop that. So it's not like overnight. So they know that. Obviously, the co-ops know that, but at least they have a planning mode to think. I mean, they do have three or four years out. And I have actually had calls from some larger dairies around it, want to make sure they get in that mix, both in the county and right adjacent to the county. So I think they're pretty sure they can find enough milk when they get going.
Mr. Clark, legislator Healy, I want to echo Mr. Barnes's comments. I think they were quite appropriate. We all hate to see it leave Cuba, but staying in the county is a big plus. I just hope that we do everything that we can, both as an IDA and as a, as a county to help the community of Cuba with this transition and find a, find a use for for those facilities over there and also keep our eye on the ball with the Trace, Tracewell Facility. Here, there's might be some businesses looking for additional office space. And so we should keep that in mind also.
I continue to work closely with the Seneca Nation. We've showed that building a number of times. Showed it to site selectors. I showed it in Best Buffalo Niagara. We've actually advertised it, the Tracewell Building. We'll continue to do that. And we're proposing to end up working with the Cuba community, primarily the, the town, but anyone else that's willing to work with us on repurposing that other building in Cuba, the Great Lakes Cheese Building. And the good thing is we have three or four years. They've developed some plans on that. So we are going to do that because obviously that's very important. Thank you, Mike.
Any further questions?
I, I just have one other thing to add if you don't mind, Kurt. It's the Mic Runner Prize Grant that we got from the state, which is really federal money, CDVG money. We've actually awarded that to, to six different companies. I can get to the company names and what they do. Basically, what they did is they had to prepare a business plan. The IDA, IDA Board reviewed them. And before that, they had to go through training, either incubator works or cord. And we've got six really good companies that we're going to help grow and, and build a good base in Allegheny County. And the goal is to get another $200,000 in the near future, do that again.
Thank you. Hopkins, comments?
Thank you, Fred.
Yep, thank you.
We do have some planning board appointments. And legislator Root, I didn't forget about you. I was just going to take care of these appointments if we can. This has been attached. It was distributed. Appointments to the planning board. Looks like Charles Chuck Jessup, Alfred, and Amanda Joyce Phelps, Vandover. If we could have a motion to that effect.
Root will make that motion.
Second.
Verdict will second it.
Motion made by legislator Root, seconded by legislator Verdict to make these appointments. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Period. And at this time, legislator Root, is there anything you want to bring up while we're in this portion of the committee?
Well, I just want to say that this group and this team have a lot of projects that they're working on, a lot of initiatives. They've been working together very hard over the last few months. The, the Trails Committee is kicked off and has been meeting and I see great promise there and progress. We have ATV separate groups that are meeting and talking. They're, they're talking about, they're working on website development, digital media. They are, they are working very hard, looking forward and getting a lot accomplished during these stressful times. And they've taken on a lot of other projects, but they're doing a great job in setting us up for the future.
Thank you. Not that we expected everyone would just be lay low and quiet during this time of COVID, but it sounds like those groups can wave, roll up their sleeves and taking advantages of that law up here. Thanks for pointing that out. With that, we will move on to Ways and Means Committee. And this is chaired by Philip Stocken. We do have a request to accept an insurance check. This is by Brenda Reilly, Clerk of the Board. And that had been distributed with our packet. It looks like this is $4,588.60 if we could have a motion on that.
Stocken moves.
And we'll second.
Motion is made by legislator Stocken, seconded by legislator. Discussion. All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Legislator Stocken, anything that you want to add or bring into this portion of the meeting?
No, thank you, sir. You've done well.
Thank you. Human Services, we have, this isn't the normal time for this committee to meet, but we do have a budget adjustment that is being requested by Dr. Robert Anderson, Community, Community Services Director. And if we can address that.
Hopkins will move that.
Motion by legislator Hopkins, seconded by legislator Verdict. This is, it's like $18,284 adjustment. This would be additional state aid funds. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Dr. Anderson, I don't know if you're with us. We're all taken care of. Also, we have at this time Public Safety Committee that again doesn't normally meet at this time, but we do have a budget adjustment from the Public Defender's Office. And this is in regard to the Hurl Hearing statewide grant. And we need to make this adjustment.
Legislator Healy will move it.
Second, Dibble.
Motion is made by legislator Healy and seconded by legislator Dibble. Discussion. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Harris.
Yes.
I just want to congratulate the representative from the Public Defender's Office for hanging in so long for this budget.
Thank you. My pleasure. Bye, everyone.
Further, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We do have, I believe, a couple of recommendations that are coming from Position Review Ad-Hoc Committee. And if our county administrator would tell us what those are.
Yes, our Ad-Hoc Committee met this morning before the state's budget presentation, and we did have two recommendations to make. The first one would be the request from the Health Department, which is to fill the Director of Environmental Health. And we are recommending that this board fill that position.
Hopkins will move that.
Is there a second?
Second it.
We have a motion made by legislator Hopkins and seconded by legislator Verdict. And this is to move forward with the environmental health position in the Health Department. Questions, comments?
This legislator Ricky, is that budgeted in this year's budget?
It is budgeted. And this is a position that the Ad-Hoc Committee, we delayed approving or recommending initially. We met with Mr. Shaw this morning along with Ms. Hopkins to go over this. So we are.
Thank you. Healy, this is necessitated by the retirement of Lauren Ballengee and Tyler Shaw moving up to the director then, and then this person held this position moving down up to the deputy director. That correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
So the next position, and there's actually two positions with the same title, is out of the Department of Social Services. These requests were also delayed so that Ms. Case could come in and meet with Mrs. Hopkins and the Ad-Hoc Committee and justify her request to fill. These are two principal social welfare examiners. They are both budgeted. One is due to retirement and one is due to a resignation. There's only three of those positions in the county, so we have two out of three positions currently vacant or soon to be vacant. We are recommending that they be filled and that she be allowed to backfill internally. If she needs any external backfills, we are asking her to come back to the Ad-Hoc Committee and discuss that.
So we would need a motion to move forward with the principal, two principal social welfare examiner positions.
That's correct.
This would also include the backfilling positions that come from within.
Correct.
Hopkins will move that. Verdict will second.
Motion made by legislator Hopkins and seconded by legislator Verdict. Discussion.
Yeah, this is legislator Verdict. Chris, just curious, when you meet with the program directors to discuss these openings and filling these positions, is one of the questions asked is how long do you think you can get along without, how long can you go without filling this position? And I'm sure all of them are saying, well, they need to fill it right away. But is there some real discussion about that, about whether the position can remain vacant for a certain amount of period? Because that's kind of the purpose of doing this is to save money and to, and it just seems like we're holding them up for like until the next meeting, but then they're all getting approved. So I, I'm just curious if that, how much discussion there is.
So I think it varies on the positions. Some of them, we know the answer to already, and some is discussion. On this one, there, there was more of a discussion about there only being three of these positions, what that means to the organization moving forward in this year and that often here where you have someone internally promoted up and what happens to the backfills. That's why we're only seeing backfill internally. If you get to the point of external, we'd like her to come back and see if that could be held up any further. So it's a case by case question because some of them are obviously more urgent than others.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. County Administrator, ma'am, did you have anything more under this Ad-Hoc Committee?
Not under the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Well, we can move to old business. I think we had maybe something there.
I actually, I have two things under old business. The first is the police reform work. I know Kier mentioned it in his agenda items that the Planning Department is assisting myself and the sheriff in moving forward with police reform. We are having a public forum tomorrow at 3:00 PM through Zoom. And it publics welcome to come on. There'll be a slide presentation and they can make comments. Meeting, we are also accepting comments through email, through traditional snail mail, and through an online survey. There is a new webpage on the county administrator's webpage. There's a section on police reform. If you were to go there, you could look at all the documents that we'll be reviewing when our police reform committee meets, which will be next week. But we do not have a time and date set for that committee as of yet. So this is moving very swiftly, but the Planning Department has kept us on our toes. They've set a timeline and helped organize us. And I really, I think Planning Department specifically, Michelle, who's done just a lot of work on this for us. And, and thank you to the sheriff too, and getting the information very quickly to myself and Michelle to have it organized. So that's my, my first item there.
Any questions for the county administrator concerning that?
Will the link for that be sent to those of us who are on that committee?
We can arrange for that. We were having everybody that wanted the link call Michelle, but I can make sure that Michelle sends the link specifically to everyone that's on the committee. That might be easier. You're correct.
And I, I had a comment from one of the public, certainly not for myself, but from a member of the public who read the whole state outline on, on this. And they thought, they said they thought that in itself was cruel and unusual punishment just to read that whole thing, but I don't know, I can't say that I agree with that, but I can't say that I disagree.
There definitely is a lot of information from the state, and we've had a number of meetings with the state and with NISAC on this as well. So we probably have even more information than, than what the public does.
County Administrator flopped up on us here a little bit. Well, we're waiting for her to circle back and reconnect. I believe legislator Hopkins, go to the order, had something she wanted to bring up, but Judy, could you address that at this time? I believe you're muted.
Sorry, I just took myself un.
There you go.
Um, yes, I received notice that there's going to be a virtual presentation dealing with menthol and flavored tobacco products and the issues that these products do create. Allegheny County youth and adults do have a higher rate of tobacco use than the rest of the state. The presentation is on Monday, February 22nd at 1:00 PM. I am going to ask Brenda to forward an email with the registration information on that to each of the legislators. But there might be something that people would be interested in and seeing the impact on, on that. So thank you.
And they obviously have advertised and gave us.
I'm sorry, I should, I should say to you, I'm sorry, I didn't say where I got the information. It's from the Partners in Prevention of Allegheny County. John Chaffey sent that to me. So just so you know where it's coming from, this organization is very active in, in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyways, the, the clerk of the board will be getting that link and information out, out to the legislators. And county administrator, are you back with us?
I am, I, I'm sorry, my internet cut out. So, I do have one more item and that's just, I, I believe we are all set to resume in-person committee meetings in March. We will have a board meeting next week via Zoom. And then after that, I believe we're all set to come back and meet in person in the, the board chambers. We have had a training this week on the, the new technology that's in there and hopefully, we'll be all ready to go.
We're a highly technical group.
Will there be a training for the legislators?
It's going to, I think you'll be able to get it. I think you'll be fine. I'm not too worried about you. I'm more worried about Brenda and Keith and making sure that they're ready to do all the administrative work on it.
Well, we look forward to that.
Marissa, this is legislator Decker.
Yeah.
On that subject of reopening in, in the chambers, I see that the state of emergency has been moved or extended through March 14th. Wouldn't that have to be changed before we can do that?
No, we've had that state of emergency all year and we've just renewed it. It hasn't really affected us being able to meet in person. We're able to do that if circumstances warrant it. Definitely, the positivity rate in the county has definitely decreased between our last meeting and the end of November and now. And I, I really feel like probably we're all set to come back in with the safety precautions in place. You know, wear your mask when you come into the building, maintain social distance. Your desks are all separated like they were before. I really feel like you can do this without changing the state of emergency.
That's wonderful news.
And there are two cameras in the chambers now that have been put into place with our, our new system. So, sure, you put a clean shirt on, comb your hair.
Yeah, I have a problem with the hair.
Is there anything else? We've kind of covered a little old business, new business and good of the order here. Is there anything else to come before the board before we adjourn?
Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, this is legislator Harris.
Yes.
We have an inter-county meeting this Friday at 9:30 AM. And it sounds as though Congressman Reed is going to be in on the call. So, it might be an interesting discussion with him if anyone's interested. I know Jody usually sends the link out, so keep an eye out for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
This, this is legislator Decker. Could Jody resend that link? I missed it.
She usually sends it either the. But I'll make sure she sends it.
Thank you.
David, they actually, I think, just went out about an, an hour or two ago. So, maybe it was pretty recently that she sent that.
Okay.
And, but. Chairman, there's no further business conduct, then we adjourn.
I think Mr. Dibble chimed in there. Do you have something?
Uh, yes, I was wondering if we had an update on the status for the county attorneys you were looking for? I think we're short two.
The county what? I didn't catch that, Mr. Dibble.
Uh, the county attorney's office for the two attorneys we may be looking for.
County attorney positions. Is there any, anything that could be shared about that, Mr. Donigan?
Yeah, thanks. There are currently two open positions for assistant county attorneys. The applications for those are on the county website. And I'm also reaching out to law schools in, in the state and other areas to try and garner some interest in these positions.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? I believe, uh, Mr. Graves was trying to come in.
I'll renew that, that motion, Mr. Chairman, to, to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Graves, seconded by Mr. Decker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, we stand adjourned. Thank you.